Okay, welcome to Cleveland Heights Committee, City Council Committee of the whole meeting. It is August eighteenth at six P M. Eddie, would you call the roll?
Uh, Posh.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Maddox.
Here.
Larson, President, Patrick.
Here.
Peter.
Here.
Here.
Alright, um, the first order of business is we have a representative from the Cedar Lee Sid. You might come and sit.
Sure, thank you.
State your name and let's get into it.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Carolyn Barney. I am the new Executive Director for the Cedar Lee Special Improvement District. Uh, thanks for your consideration tonight. Eddie, thanks for your prompt responses to my messages. Um, in just two months from today, we have the Heights Halloween Fest, which we hope to welcome over four thousand families and cute dressed up trick or treaters to the Cedar Lee District uh, for what we believe to be the biggest district event of the city, uh, probably outside King Park. Um, that event is produced wonderfully by DoBama Theater. Uh, they will have four themed stages, um, a variety of entertainment, and the kids and families go business to business trick or treating. So it's a great way uh, to support our local businesses as well. DoBama in the past, um, this is the fifth year, they have raised and helped fund this event, and after COVID, that's gotten very tricky. So the event is growing in popularity, um, and we just don't have the funding behind it. So we are asking this year for the city's consideration, uh, for five thousand dollars of support. If you receive this memo, there's an outline of how we would spend the money. Um, some cute pictures you can see of, uh, community members and hopefully people from across the city coming to enjoy our district. Um, that five thousand will be well spent. Uh, we're hoping to get reconsideration for the street closure for that event, um, given the size of it, um, and that we have a lot of families and children around. But we're excited, uh, for this event and, uh, look forward to, as we grow the event and bring more people into the district, have the city support financially while it's produced and very well run by DoBama Theater.
Very good. Um, first, any questions? Carolyn, and then, oh, go ahead.
Yes, so you said, uh, reconsideration for the street closure. Could you tell us more about that?
We were just notified last week that, um, we were denied street closure for this event this year due to staffing issues. Um, and that came from the Chief of Police. Uh, so we're working. We have offered if we could pay for private security, could the street be shut down if we had the right security support that wasn't taking attacks on the city? Um, but given the size and just the safety with kids around and this being the largest event we do in the district, um, we're trying to figure out a solution that can allow us the space to put on an event and the safety and, and the streets, uh, to host all the guests.
And just remind me, because I don't have any front of me.
Yes.
Was the five thousand for secure, was security part of that?
We don't have that in there.
Okay, I didn't think so.
We are talking between the Sid and potentially, uh, looking at what the, what the cost might be for that. Um, due to the fact I haven't been in place this year, there's a little bit of event support that the Sid could give depending on the cost.
God, thank you.
Yeah, I'm really concerned about shutting the street down because we've worked that event. We've had our table on the sidewalk and little children running around. I'm just afraid for the safety of everybody and I, if you need any support for that reconsideration request, uh, please let us know.
I'd love, however, I'm, I'm new here, some understanding processes. Um, so however I can get support and reconsideration and we, we understand there, there's, you know, we understand some of our businesses have staffing issues right now, so if there's a way we can solve for that through, um, hiring out if need be, we're happy to look into that.
This is along the same lines is that, I don't know if we was looking into it, but recently, uh, we did a festival down these Cleveland and there's obvious staffing issues there and Ohio County Sheriff's, uh, were able to send a couple of folks to kind of assist as part of a special events. They've done it a couple of times, but I don't know if that's a special arrangement just with, with these Cleveland or so, but I do know that they, they service other cities. I don't know if that's an option, um, with the chief or anything, but I'm just curious. It just popped in my head now.
Oh, that's a good.
They were able to help, uh, just a couple of weeks ago.
It's a great suggestion.
Anybody interested in sponsoring? Cause you can't do it, right?
No, oh, I'm.
No, yeah, you can't do it.
I was just eliminating you when you were. Um.
One, two, three.
Okay, let's leave this.
Everyone else.
Yeah, spot.
I believe we budgeted for it as well.
Did we?
Yeah, that's, that's part of the overall one that you guys said, so.
Beautiful.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Much appreciated. Nice to meet everyone.
Alright, thank you.
I'll be back.
Yeah. Um, do we have, uh, anybody here from Cleveland Heights for immigrant rights? Oh, good. Same thing, state your name and, and your business.
Okay.
Um, hi, my name's Lynn Tramanti. I'm, I'm the Executive Director of Ohio Immigrant Alliance and I'm here on behalf of Cleveland Heights for Immigrant Rights. Great to see everybody. Um, we're here to request your support, um, in our proposal to have a legal representation program at, um, sponsored by the city for, of Cleveland Heights. It will be only the second program in the state of Ohio that actually funds basically a public defender program for immigrants who are in civil immigration court. Right now, if you have an immigration case in the court, you are on your own to find a lawyer. Um, these are immigration cases, these immigration court cases are life and death matters for many people. Um, it could mean the possibility of being sent back to a place that tortured you, that killed your family, a place where you, um, uh, have left and have no prospects of, uh, surviving. Uh, we work with many people who have fled just unimaginable horrors and have chosen to make Cleveland Heights their home. They are trying to work to pay for lawyers, but asylum cases cost ten, twenty thousand dollars to win. If you have a lawyer, you are ten times more likely to win your case in immigration court. So what that means is that if you don't have a lawyer, you may have a winnable case, but you're being ordered deported in the court. So our proposal, um, is a pilot project. Um, it honestly, you know, I think that in this, in this community in which I lived for eighteen years, I think that it doesn't matter who's in charge of the government, right? This is a community that embraces immigrants, that believes that we are a diverse community, that that's a value. And I think that this is the kind of program that would actually distinguish us amongst, uh, other communities in Ohio. Nobody else is doing this except for Columbus, and so I think it would really put, put our money where our mouth is. I talk to many residents and they say, I wish we could do more, I wish we could do more. This is something we can't do. Our Cleveland Heights for Immigrant Rights has come up with an eight-point proposal. There's many other things that we think we can be doing, but this is what we're putting forward as our top priority. It doesn't matter who is in charge of the city, it doesn't matter who is at the head of government, it doesn't matter who is on council. We all believe that immigrants have a place in Cleveland Heights. There's no reason to delay on this project, there's no reason to delay in starting it, because once, we have to get it started. There are people being deported already. Just last week, we know of, um, at least two people arrested in our community, but also sadly, um, these young, these men's roommate was arrested as well at a ICE check-in. Um, of course, everybody heard about the solitary raid, and, um, that kind of brought it to your face because you saw it, but, you know, I've been seeing it for, I mean, how long? I've been talking to you, Mayor Sarin, about this for maybe eight, nine years, but I've been seeing this for seventeen, eighteen years since I come back to Ohio. I've been working with people who are going through deportation. We actually interviewed my colleague, Maryam C., who is a Cleveland Heights resident, and interviewed two hundred and fifty-five people who were deported. Uh, we wrote a book called Broken Hope: Deportation and the Road Home. One thing we're saying is that people who are deported should have a right to come home to their families and communities. So what we're saying with this proposal is let's just stop the bleeding from Cleveland Heights. Let's give people a chance to fight their cases. It's not going to fix everything and we're not going to be done once we implement this program, but at least we can do something right now for our residents and distinguish ourselves from other people. Um, so I'm happy to take any questions. I know I only had a couple of minutes and then, um, you know, everybody on the Cleveland Heights for Immigrant Rights, um, organization, I mean, it's, it's just got a lot of energy. Everybody's super excited. I'm not the expert on the entire proposal. There's lots of other people who can answer other questions.
Just so you know, I'm one hundred percent in support of this. Uh, everyone I've, I've spoken to about it, you, you're absolutely right. Energy and passionate and this absolutely fills in the gap. One of the things that I wanted to ask and I was hoping, uh, you can kind of shed some light on publicly as people were asking about this is the Columbus partnership. I know that there are some public-private partnerships, uh, in, in terms of the funding, in terms of support. Could you talk a little bit about that? I think would be helpful, maybe for the public to hear some of that in terms of how that works and how they're operating that program.
Yeah. Yeah, for sure. So there's a group called Advocates for Basic Legal Equality. It's a pro bono law firm, um, that operates mostly on the west side of Ohio, and so they actually got a contract through the city of Columbus to provide the legal services for immigrants that are Columbus residents, so they're Columbus taxpayers, um, who are able to use the program, and they have, you know, there's eligibility requirements and things like that, and the program's been around since the first Trump administration. I'm sure that you could, um, that we could help set up or you could set up yourselves, some sort of learning with the Columbus government, you know, to kind of learn how the program works, what they would do differently, you know, how they would want to change it. Um, but it's good that Columbus has done this first, so you can learn from it. There's actually dozens, actually maybe hundreds even, of cities around the country have done it. Um, the Vera, uh, the Safe Network with Vera Institute for Justice has a website that gives, that could show you the whole map of cities and states around the country and even, um, you know, Maryland as a whole state has done this. I think Illinois as a whole state. So there's really a movement, um, to create a public defender program for immigrants because the stakes are so high for them in these court cases. And Cleveland is the home of the only immigration court in Ohio, which is why Cleveland Heights being in the, in the backyard or the, you know, the bedroom community for Cleveland, it's, it's really appropriate to have Cleveland Heights be another testing ground for this.
Have you seen any backlash, you know, from cities that have adopted this?
That's a great question. Um, I'm not familiar with the, with any backlash, but I'm sure there is. We can look into that.
That's what I was going to.
Yeah.
In terms of a lot of pushback, uh, that I've spoken to the folks is they're afraid in terms of the current administration and what that looks like. Um, I'm of the opinion that we still have to take that leadership role and be able to push back. We can't just not do something because of that fear. Um, but it is out there, so I'm happy that he asked me speaking to that because that's something that I know a lot of cities are confronting, not just about this issue, um, but any issue around our immigrants, D E I. And so this is something that, um, a lot of folks are afraid or wondering, maybe we need to take a pause or read just some of that programming. And some of our residents have even asked if this could harm that, and so just speaking about.
I, I did have one thing to say on that. Immigration judges love it when immigrants have lawyers. They hate it when people come into court and don't know what to file, don't know what's going on, have to, they have to keep giving contingencies for people to find counsel. It makes their jobs so much harder. So, uh, from the government perspective, that efficiency, the judges love it when people have lawyers. The prosecutors don't love it, but the judges do, and so, and those are parts of the government. So I have not, this has not been an issue that, uh, the Trump administration has focused on. They focused on cutting federal contracts for the government-funded lawyers, but when a city pays for it, the Trump administration hasn't focused on that yet. Will they? Maybe in year two or three? Maybe, yeah, but that's a good question.
Maybe there's so many they can't focus, so we had a couple, we have time for a couple more questions.
So this is a financial ask, um, and I've, I've met with, um, a couple of the folks that are in the group and they've shared, I guess, an eight-point plan. Can you explain, you know, specifically what you're looking for, for this council, so they understand about how much money?
Yeah.
It's a pilot program, it'll touch X number of people.
Yeah, sure.
And you'd need legislation from some committee to move forward with that, if that's what we think is, makes sense.
We're asking for two hundred thousand dollars. Um, the committee, we have been consulted with an immigration lawyer that my organization paid for, um, and they believe that it would help up to fifteen people, direct representation plus monthly legal clinics that could help dozens of people over a year's period of time. Um, I believe it's a PR boost for the city and I believe that you could get more people attracted to the city. We want to become a more diverse city. I mean, uh, we want to attract more immigrants, I believe. Um, we don't, actually don't have a huge immigrant base in Cleveland Heights yet, but my organization has brought, brought people to live in Cleveland Heights. I mean, um, the three men who are here now, um, you guys came here to live in Cleveland Heights because we're friends. Um, they're renting a house, uh, near me, and then, like I said, another colleague of mine, Maryam C., who is an organizer with my organization, um, she's an immigrant here and her husband as well, and they, a lot of people are starting to come to Cleveland Heights because of people that they know here in the network here, and same with me, which you guys know very well. People are moving here because they know people here. So that's how immigrants move to places, it's because of people they know. So I believe that we would be attracting more immigrant residents if we have a more, uh, if we take, make a bigger state, statement, uh, of the immigrant.
I have sat in Cleveland's immigration court and it's appalling, especially when the littles come in. Um, I would like to be involved in, if the council approves it, whatever committee it might get assigned to, to help with that legislation, to move it forward.
Councilwoman Russell has not been able to speak, yeah.
Go on.
Uh, yes, I was just wondering, uh, does legal aid help at all immigrant?
I'm so glad you brought that up. Okay, that, that's the biggest question that I think people have said, is that we have Legal Aid Society of Cleveland, Catholic Charities, Diocese of Cleveland, we have these organizations that are doing this. Why is this needed? I, I asked them, you know, how many cases are you taking? They are not taking any new cases. None.
Zero.
Zero. They're not even keeping, uh, a waiting list. They said, maybe we will reopen our waiting list in September. That was Legal Aid. Catholic Charities of Cleveland, or it's not taking, they're not even starting a waiting list because there's such a demand. So immigrants that are detained, they get a list of these service providers that they're supposed to call. They call through all of them. Nobody can answer the phone. If they answer the phone, nobody can take their case. So that's how, that's how huge, that's how big the gap is between the need and the demand. So we can't solve that whole problem in Cleveland Heights, but we can, we can address it for our residents, for some of our residents.
Can you clear up a, a process, uh, question for me? So a president by executive order can say, um, you know, we're going to grant political asylum, and then the next president can come in and say, we're not going to do that. Is that true or accurate?
Uh, if you're talking about asylum.
Yes.
It's an individual determination.
I'm sorry?
It's an, and it's made on a case-by-case basis with each case, each individual case.
So no, there can be, no executive orders can usurp that, uh?
No, it would have to be made on, for each individual case, but what they could do, like what they just did with Haitians, they designated this new, uh, a new gang as a terrorist group. So they're giving, um, the powers to the agency to go back in to re- review all the cases of people that they've already granted and say, are you attached to this group? Well, now you're a terrorist. And you know how they define gangs as terrorists and how they get to find a connection to a gang. So they're, they can do stuff like that. They make these blanket designations so that an individual officer can go back in and reopen these cases and take, take stuff away from people. Um, but in asylum, it's a technical thing. They can't just take away asylum from everybody. They could take T P S away from everybody in a country, yeah. But that, but that's also being challenged and for.
Can you introduce us to the three nine letter?
Well, um, we're not really doing names.
Oh, okay, got it.
Yeah, but these are, um, you guys want to say hi? I mean.
Hi.
Yeah, there, you want to say where you're from? Do, I'm, I just want to say where you're from, but maybe just don't.
Maybe not, maybe, maybe no, no.
From where?
Cause they're.
We're. Time, yeah.
Oh, yeah, so it's, no, yeah. Okay.
Alright, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Um, so the next thing we're going to do is, um, go into executive session and, um, I guess, uh, what we're going to do is just have, uh, staff with us first, uh, and the mayor, of course. Uh, so go ahead.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we go into executive session to consider the lease or sale of city-owned real property and to consider confidential information related to the marketing plans, specific business strategy, production techniques, trade secrets, or personal financial statements of an applicant for economic development assistance or to negotiations with other political subdivisions, respecting requests for economic development assistance is necessary to protect the interests of the applicant or the possible investment or expenditure of public funds to be made in connection with the economic development project.
Alright, do we have a second?
Second.
Alright, any discussion?
Um, at our last meeting, we went into executive session, and I don't know if the anticipated subject is the same as that last executive session, but then we went into the open meeting and what was discussed in the executive session was the, uh, subject conversation in the city council meeting. And if that's going to be the case for what's upcoming, then I don't know why we're holding an executive session. If people aren't going to hold what is said in executive session in confidence.
Well, go ahead.
You're referring to the mayor's comment when he started speaking last week?
I didn't mention any names, but you're correct.
So I, I thought that I was very careful not to disclose, um, anything that anybody said in executive session, but I did, however, explain what the administration has been working on, uh, in collaboration with the developers who are working through a, a re-envisioning of Park Synagogue. Um, and sort of where we left it, uh, between the administration and the developers. I very deliberately did not bring into the public conversation what was discussed in executive session. And I don't know if I should at this point mention that there was a very distinct difference between what was discussed in executive session and what I said, but I thought that that was very clear, that I wasn't breaking any kind of executive session privilege by talking about what the administration had worked on. Um, and I very deliberately excluded any conversation that took place in executive session. So I just, I don't know if you understood that that, there was a distinction there.
Well, we'll agree to disagree.
Alright, well, in that case, do we have an agreement now that we're gonna, we're gonna have an executive session and keep the privilege in the room?
I'm agreeing to that.
Okay. I mean, I'd like to hear if anybody's not going to keep to that. Go ahead.
Is it just one subject area?
I, I believe so.
Okay.
Okay, I'm, so everybody's agreeing to it, then, um, call the roll.
Larson.
Hi.
Maddox.
Hi.
Russell. Posh.
Yes.
Cobb.
Yeah.
Uda.
Hi.
Patrick.
Hi.
Alright, thank you. Okay, we're out of executive session and, uh, we are going to go through legislative review at this time. And I'm going to start with first readings, uh, for consideration for adoption. First, uh.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
Are we, did you hear from us at all or no?
Not, not at this moment. So, one fifty-seven, twenty twenty-five, an ordinance to amend certain subsequent paragraphs of ordinance eleven, twenty twenty-five relating to appropriations and other expenditures. Um, and this kind of gets into some of the other legislation. Go ahead.
I am confused because when we got the spreadsheet that came as the attachment for this legislation, it said the fund that would be used for all four of these items would be coming from General Fund one oh one. And the description on the memos from Director Klink scale.
The, I think the memos were not revised since, these were old when it was first submitted, the memos.
Okay, so they are saying one oh two?
Because the memo says two oh one.
Right, as far as the exhibit goes, yes, that was the one that was, that was one that was given most recently. The memos were from the previous request, when they, when this was initially requested.
So it is all coming from General Fund one oh one?
Does that mean the money is not in two oh one to cover it? Because why would we go to the general fund if it was?
And that's a, it, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
That's a valid question because Fund two oh one, unencumbered balance that I looked at as of three thirty-one, which is months ago, was four million eight hundred forty-four thousand three oh seven. So there's unencumbered funds in Fund account two oh one, so that's my question. Couldn't we use that instead of going to the general fund?
We would need the finance director for that. Yeah, yeah.
You're looking at March numbers.
Yes, I know.
Where do we know what's in that fund today?
I know, I understand that, Councilor Cobb, I know.
As of six thirty, cause this was just given out. It's five point five.
Well, it's just given out, it was just given out.
I just sent this to you guys, it was just given to me today for the meeting tomorrow.
That's an email you just sent, yeah.
Mr. Scrabble, but hey.
So how do we resolve, hmm, this is for adoption tonight, so? I mean, we, we need some, actually, um, Director Hannah, what would be the consequence of not voting on this? Well, it wouldn't just be this, it would be the three pieces of legislation that have different funds listed. And I understand part of it is that the cover sheets were all, but.
I don't know, but I, I would remind you that you're scheduling, I believe, a special meeting next Monday, so that theoretically you could be looking at a one-week change if, if that were necessary.
Where are the?
I don't know if there's Public Works or Finance.
Posted on the portal. Is that where, were those two years?
On the board portal, uh, the public portal.
Question is, do the, uh, city participate in the fifty-fifty program with the county for paving and, uh, streets repairs and anything, anybody?
It does. Euclid Heights Boulevard was part of that.
It does.
Yeah, Euclid Heights Boulevard.
Huh?
Euclid Heights Boulevard is part of that.
Is any of these going to be part of that or the issue two? Program?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure I.
Okay, I'll, then maybe collect, I'll just. Thank you.
Um, if, if we voted on this tonight, uh, Director Hannah, and then it turned out there was money in two oh one, could we move two oh one to the general fund at some point? I mean, is that?
You would have to take formal action to do it, but, yeah.
Alright, go ahead.
Um, if, okay, so we're going to have a meeting Monday night, the twenty-fifth, is that now?
Yes.
Can we just postpone this until the twenty-fifth? It's one week.
Well, it wouldn't just be this though, right? It would be the three pieces of legislation.
I mean, we're having a finance committee meeting tomorrow. It seems like that would be appropriate to do. Gives us a chance to, to look at the finances.
Well, I mean, only to discuss though. I mean, we're still be, we must still be voting a week from today, you know, hypothetically.
Right, you could do a fresh reading. Move this to.
Well, again, when you say this, the, uh, Councilwoman Larson, are you saying all three pieces of legislation?
The three that are coming from Public Works.
Do I?
As of the funds report from March thirty-first, it had four million some dollars in it, unencumbered, and I'm just wondering why we can't use that money instead of one oh one. And I don't see that information on the reports that we gathered in front of us shortly ago. Talking about the unencumbered balance.
So road program, North Park change order, and balance due to the county for Coventry Road, those three. And then the, the general fund, sixty-seven thousand two hundred ninety-two for G P D. Are we, we're, I, I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm, I don't have room to flip all these pages, but is that also have both one oh one and two oh one as funding sources? Yes, I could flip.
Did we not discuss changing this the last time we discussed this?
Ask that a different way, because I don't, I don't understand the question.
So I'm assuming we're talking about, um, that step down, one fifty-seven?
Yes, um, but in, in, and, and all three pieces of legislation that have both one oh one and. Yes, um, but in, in, and, and, and all three pieces of legislation that have both 101 and 201 listed as the funding source.
Like the previous memos from Director Klink Scale for the pieces when they were originally requested, say 201. But the exhibit that I got from the finance director for the budget adjustment for this week, say 101.
Okay.
And this Councilwoman Larson just said there's more than enough money to cover this in 201.
Which is why, the last time we discussed this, my understanding is that we were-
Right, the one piece was done from 201, we didn't need a budget adjustment for it. But then there was an email from Director Klink Scale after that meeting, or maybe it was right before, that discussed that there wasn't enough for all four.
Archit adjustments, or-
So that would be the reason for the transfers then?
Right.
Okay, so then, the concern about the additional funds in 201?
Unencumbered, unencumbered.
Now, what I'm remembering from the last discussion is that the alternative to transferring, increasing 101, transferring money from 101 was to simply increase the budget for fund 201 to make use of the additional unencumbered funds and unbudgeted funds in fund 201. Perhaps I'm, I'm, I think Mr. President, I think there was a different piece.
Maybe it was a different-
Because, because the finance director prepared that exhibit and, and recirculated it, and it was amended by substitution.
Right.
I don't remember what it was specifically, but similar to different.
So what's our choice here?
Well, I think, Mr. President, just as an option, in order to move things forward, I don't know that this would be what the Public Works Director would ask for. But in terms of moving it forward to get these projects, you know, going and continuing, if there is a need to take the money from 201, let's say, in order to use that money instead of using the general fund dollars, the two options that you could do is amend this to include 201 as, uh, as the source, or simply, I think what you discussed, or, or what somebody asked about, which is, if you think that it's useful to, you know, make these expenditures as requested, fund it out of 101, and then refund 101 through that.
I agree.
I mean, the main thing is, is that when we passed the budget in March, you know, we, we already kinda said, in, in a sense, we don't wanna take anything else out of the general fund, because we allocated money in the other funds as we, as the budget called for. So, I mean, it's, you know, it's not an explicit thing, but, so, I mean, it-
I think these expenditures though are all, in, in the pieces of legislation that the director sent over, are all obviously important to accomplish for the city.
Yeah, that, there's no question about that.
If you proceed now and, and you determine it wasn't necessary, as the mayor said, you can adjust backward um, at a future meeting, and then you're back in the middle of that market that you mentioned.
I'm okay with that, we will be discussing it tomorrow night at the finance committee meeting.
And in that case, um, maybe we can get a recommendation from the finance committee about-
Yes.
About the legislation.
Yes.
All right.
We'll have our reports tomorrow night that we can look at.
So, I'm, I'm assuming for 158, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter an agreement with GPD for construction management of, uh, 2025 road program, that was, you know, same thing, and then 159, the change order with agreement with, I think it's Lineac paving. And-
And I think, I-
160, no?
Yeah, 160 as well, so 158, 159, and 168 are the ones that go with the 157 budget adjustment.
Yeah.
And I think you could just refer 157 to finance for tomorrow night, have that discussion. Wouldn't necessarily need to refer the other ones, because it's just the fin- where the finance-
Right, so we could vote on these?
Well, you don't need to vote on those, you could just read them, and then we could vote on them next week after we find out the funding.
I thought we just said-
It's up to you guys.
But I get it.
My hearing, what he, what we're, he's suggesting is that we-
Vote on, vote on.
Vote tonight, and then reimburse.
Vote tonight, and reimburse.
Ultimately, yeah, the, the, the question is about whether or not council believes that these programs are good or not. And then the, the question about whether or not we're funding the model 101 or 201 is something that can be discussed. But getting them moving so that the work can begin is, is an important piece of this.
Nobody's questioning whether or not we like to have a particular road repaired. What we're questioning is about the finances behind all this, and how it's getting paid for, and how it should be given to us, and how our questions could, could be asked or answered, that's what this is all about.
Okay, so, to answer that question then, I think that in this meeting, it was brought up that there is money in 201 that could potentially be used in order to fund these things. The initial ask was for the money from 101 to be used to fund these things. So really, for those items, those three items, the change orders, so on and so forth, that is a question about whether or not council believes that those are good items to move forward. If your determination hinges on whether or not those items should move forward using 201 or 101, again, council is the budgetary authority and can determine that money from 201 can refund 101 if you see that that is a necessary thing to do, uh, you could do that at any point. Um, and so if you determine that it should be funded out of 201, it can be. Uh, but in terms of expediency of moving the projects forward, um, if you do believe that those projects are good things to move forward, uh, moving forward now, and, and I, I, I would like to look into whether or not 201 is an appropriate place to fund this from, but, uh, holding up the project if you believe that the project is good to move forward, um, for that determination, I don't know if that's necessary.
Mayor, I think we have an agreement here that we would, you know, just reimburse the general fund, I mean, unless anybody objects to that. Okay, all right, so let's go to 161, that's a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter an agreement with Dr. Arnold Felton, to provide medical services for our, is it 12?
Yeah.
Um, so this is routine legislation, it's required by law that you have a doctor available, any questions about that? All right, 165 is a resolution providing funding for the Happy 5K, 5K for the 5K. Any questions about that? This is for their, kind of, after, the, to block party, the, kind of, after.
And this is reimbursement basis like it started being a year or two ago.
Right.
They present, um, written information sufficient for the Director of Finance to approve, and then it's paid out.
No. Okay, she's gone.
Did, did, did we include in this legislation that new clause that says that we're gonna monitor the expenditure and-
Because it's reimbursement.
It's in, in section one, yeah, it says that it's as reimbursement for some costs of the run upon receiving a given request for that reimbursement and such reasonable evidence of expenses that the Director of Finance may require.
Now, these two pieces of legislation that you handed, do they, are they first reading for passage?
No, that one's third reading.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, it's right here.
This one's just for first reading only.
Yes, okay, is there, um, all right, so we're adding our first reading. 166, so let's talk about that. 166, 2025, and this is a resolution authorizing the director and mayor to execute an agreement with ETC Institute to design and administer a survey to gauge the overall satisfaction of the residents of the city of Cleveland Heights. Councilman Posh, you want to say a few words?
I have a couple paragraphs, but in the, in the spirit of trying to keep this short, this has been, this is a residential satisfaction survey that would cost the city essentially thirteen thousand five hundred dollars. The last time we had one done was in, uh, 2020. I'm suggesting that we immediately take, we, we immediately do this now for the, um, to benefit a new mayor, benefit us, um, benefit staff, help us prioritize things that we, that we don't know are important or, whether we know them are important or not, but I think it's gonna help us prioritize things. We discussed this at length in the Public, um, Safety and Health Committee, and we all agreed at the time that, and we, we, we looked at some stuff that Schicker was doing, looked at their priorities, and we all agreed that, hey, look, we really are, we should have done this survey a long time ago. We shouldn't have waited until now to do it. There was some concern that it would be perceived as political, um, because the findings may not come out, may, make the city look very good, and would be used against people in their elections. I think we're at a point, and so essentially, the, the legislation was, was parked, uh, until now. Uh, we have a budget process coming up in November, um, we will obviously have a new mayor. I think it's gonna be helpful for this new mayor and for us in the budgeting process, and also, it's gonna help staff understand what the residents feel are important as far as, and what our priorities should be. It's a thirteen-five-hundred-dollar spend, it's not a very big spend. You've even used the existing survey that was issued, um, in 2020 with some modifications. It's something that can easily be, be distributed to, to residents in order to take in the same fashion that that survey was done in what other cities, in what other cities do. I'm gonna read them all formal statements in the, um, in our main, in our main meeting. But I would like to get this approved as soon as possible. And since it was just sort of dumped on everybody today, I don't think it's fair to task people to vote on it tonight on a democracy basis, but if we are meeting on the 25th, I'd like to be able to see if we can move for adoption at that time.
Um, and we could discuss it now, I have no objection to that, but it is first reading, and, you know, like you said, you just got it, so. Maybe, all might want to reserve, I, it's up to you, Paul.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea, this is the same company that had been, uh, doing these, um, for the city, I don't know if it was every two years or every four years, and the last time was in 2020. So we're not setting some new precedent by doing this, I think it's a great idea.
Any other comments? I mean, I see the benefit, like a new mayor with, might have data, you know, and data points to look at, I, I, I see that benefit. I don't know if a new mayor would want to do the survey differently, but, um, you know, yeah, go ahead.
That's, that's my concern, is, is making sure that the information and whatever's collected is what would be necessary for someone to str- plan strategy, envision any of that. And so I just wanna make sure that if we're spending this money, we wouldn't turn around and find out, uh, that someone decided to do this again based on additional information they would have added in terms of their decision-making or anything, and so, that, that, that's my concern, is, is the timing of this, and just making sure that someone has the ability to get information that they want, for that administration, and does not have to pay for another survey, because they're looking at something specifically about that. And so, I'm just thinking of, from, from a, a leadership point of view, I'm not quite sure if, if I would do that in that timing just based on the fact that they may see something differently, completely differently, or would add a section, or, or they, they're trying to really, really strategize with that through these, this, this survey, I, I just, I would hate that to spend this money twice, is what I'm getting at, or in any other way, if there's something that we could, could do, so, that's my opinion.
Yeah, I mean, the, so, the timing, I mean, the actual process timing, when, like, let's just say, for the sake of, you know, discussion, if we did pass it next week, week after, how long would it take them to come up with the survey and, and, and then, like, get it?
I'd have to go back to my notes, but I believe it's a total three-month process, if I recall correctly.
So would it be possible for the, I mean, since that would go past November, or could go right around the November 4th election date, that, I mean, um-
I think realistically, by the time things get signed and the contracts get signed, you're not gonna get your data until probably the end of November. And that's right, right in the middle of our budget process, we'll have a new mayor, we'll be able to use that data at that time and help, I would assume-
I was talking about that, I was talking about, like, would there still be time for a new mayor to have input on the, uh, the actual-
Survey, so.
The survey, yeah.
Probably not, but when you look at these surveys, there's a lot of continuity that happens year after year after year after year. I mean, you're not gonna change that survey a whole lot, you may spend a little bit of emphasis this, this time, maybe on a, on a pool possibly. But, I mean, the whole issue is looking at what was said in the last survey versus what is said in this survey, and, and I think the questions are pretty similar, I mean, they're talking about waste removal, they're, they're talking about roadwork, they're talking about traffic safety, they're talking about, you know, perception of how quickly people's questions get answered, um-
I'm just saying, since it's such a, it's gonna be so close, why not just, you know, like, maybe get it started, and then maybe time it so the, the new mayor could maybe sign off on it or have input on it, uh, you had your-
I'm, I'm not running for mayor, so I think this is helpful, I can tell you, if you did that survey, it wouldn't have key information that I would wanna know, give you an example. If I was sitting down and I was trying to figure out several i- issues in terms of the neighborhoods in the city, in terms of our diversity of our programming, and for instance, in our rec department, that's something that we brought up, in terms of our relationships and how we view our relationships, our residents to our border cities, and those, each of those relationships and what that looks like, and how that connects to our services. Um, in, in terms of merging or regionalizing some things in our, in our community and what that looks like. So I think that there's, there's things from a high-level executive point that that would be helpful, that maybe add as someone is trying to cast vision for what they're doing next, um, that maybe we wouldn't capture as a council when we're meeting with them because they're thinking of it a different way, but I'm just thinking those, there's some things just in the past surveys that I know residents have said, this survey does not capture anything that I would wanted it to capture in terms of my experience and my viewpoint in my particular neighborhood and how I'm servicing, so, I, I think it would be helpful if we're gonna tighten that up or get additional information, that, that, that whoever that person is involved in that process. Um, because again, maybe, maybe it is a more extensive survey, and maybe that's what we need at this point, because again, you're right, we have everything from our pool to our safety to our services, the north side still has major issues and questions, everything from where we would move, our, our, our salt going down, so I think if we have an opportunity to add those in and get some type of insight, I, I think it would be helpful in terms of, even if it was about moving something to another location or the other side of the city, anything that we're thinking strategically, I think, might be helpful, and, and so that's why I, I don't think it's a bad idea, I just would like to make sure that there's some collaboration with that new administration to make sure anything that they can glean from that, we're getting into that survey right away, um, versus doing another one for something specific, but.
So what I hear is, maybe we tee it up, but wait long enough to get the input, you, you wanna respond to that?
Yeah, so this is, so this is the trouble, just based on the timing, so, there's gonna be a budget set by March of next year. If we wait, you're not gonna have any meaningful results after a new mayor comes in to, I mean, if you think of the budget as a roadmap, so that whole first year of that mayor's term, they won't have any data, although, of course, they're gonna have some data, but they're not gonna have data from a survey like, like this, that they could use to help craft a budget for their first year in operations.
I'm wondering if it would be a hubus to put this on for first reading only on the 25th?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't let you finish.
On the 25th, with an attachment of the questions that were asked in the 2020 survey, so that everyone can see what was out there, and, um, because the gentleman that we interviewed from ETC said he was amenable to adding some things.
Yes, so that data is on the, on the website, and I could make sure that it's in everybody's hands in the next day or two, including some of the results from Schicker's survey as well, just so you can see what the results look like.
Um, I mean, I think we've brought up enough things that we could come back, you know, from now and, and see what.
So this is going on for first reading today?
No.
So we use, we've used this company before?
They have continually provided this service to the city, but the last time it was twenty twenty. And the only other survey that's been done, I believe that we're aware of, is the purchase survey, but.
Another survey, please stop saying.
So you, you, you met, you, you all met with the, with the E T C institutions?
We did, yes.
They will provide that information that Kayla was talking about?
Yes.
Josh and Naomi are here from Sustainable Community Advisors, Associates. Always gift on that, any questions for them? Anything you guys wanna say?
Just looking for guidance on the roadmap, where we are.
Mayor?
All right, I don't think that that's a question for me.
Not necessarily, but is there anything you wanna add to what we need to know about having a first reading or?
Well, okay, sure, thank you. I think that I've been clear publicly, you know, talking with, with Steve Litt and there's people in the community who feel that this is a project that needs to move forward and could be a real benefit long-term, both in very tangible ways and in very intangible ways. I think that it is something that we should be proud to make happen. That is my personal feeling, I think that in addition to the direct benefits of the project, both in terms of obviously pulling up the permits and the construction costs and the income tax from the construction and the income tax from potential new residents and income tax from potential new workers working in Empire Ed, and also the direct benefits of adding this new function, this new use into our community, this higher education use, this fits really well with how we see ourselves as a community of the arts. I think that in and of itself is, is a really good reason to, to laud this project. And then thinking about sort of the indirect benefits, and I'm not just talking about the indirect financial benefits, I know that there's a lot of focus on that, and that's an important piece of this conversation. But the, the indirect, non-directly financial benefits, you know, the city maybe doesn't have an ability to quantify the, the change that occurs when we see more redevelopment in a community that has stagnated for decades. When we start to see more and more development, and we don't see too many hiccups or false starts, we start to develop a different kind of relationship and a different kind of reputation with the private sector who the public sector relies on to redevelop, to build, especially in legacy cities like ours. We are, are, you know, a historical suburb of the city of Cleveland. And we don't have a whole hell of a lot of opportunities for really large developments. We've got a few, but it is very easy for developers to go elsewhere. There's ease when it comes to navigating approval bodies that they can find elsewhere. There's ease when it comes to environmental or historical rehabilitation concerns and requirements and restrictions. Redevelopment is always more difficult than development, which is why you see a whole bunch of office parks pulling up, up highway exits on land that has never been built on. Doing that kind of work here in a legacy suburb, let's call it, is a little bit more difficult. And our track record of interacting with the private sector has not been beneficial to the city of Cleveland Heights when it comes to actually being able to attract developers to do the kind of work that we know we need to have happen in this community if we're not going to continue to be lapped by some of our neighbors. And that requires sort of a full-throated partnership, in my view. And so with, with regard to this particular project, you know, in talking with the developers, I think that there is a, a positive beneficial compromise to be had here. I think the, the last star conversation, you know, and, and you, I think you were all on the email from, from the developers about the, the potential compromise that I, I feel is an appropriate compromise that, you know, allows for the city to be a partner in a relatively large project and, and, and really allows the project to move forward. Now, I, I know that the developers are here, they can answer questions from their perspective. I think it's a good project, I think it's worth the investment, and I think the investment will pay off dividends that are both tangible and intangible for decades. And we will be planting a tree that maybe none of us will enjoy the shade of in its fullest extent, but that will enter to the benefit of residents of Cleveland Heights for generations. So I don't know if you have questions that you would like to ask the developers, but I'm sure that they would welcome the opportunity to, to provide any more input, insight, information that they can. And of course, you know, the, the whole idea was, was hopefully that council would be interested or amenable to at the very least adding it to the agenda, I don't know if that would be for, I'm sure everybody on, on one side of this thing would, would like for that to be first reading adoption, but even if that's not the case, adding it to the agenda for a first reading, I think would be a step in the right direction, the legislation that, that's been provided. But again, I'm sure council members may have questions or, or need more information.
That's what I wanna get to, like, really running over here, but thank you, Mayor. I think everybody agrees that this is a good project and the arts portion of this is very exciting and, you know, the idea of having some public access, you know, it's always when you get to the details. I mean, I think this, this is always the case, does anybody have any questions for Josh and Naomi?
Josh and Naomi, thank you so much for being here, thank you for your interest in Cleveland Heights. I like this project a lot and want to see it move forward. Would you be able to in an email send us maybe the repayment periods and the interest rates for the other loans that you are looking to get? And in addition to that, could you also send along the amounts that you requested versus received from the other funding sources?
Sure, but the public loans, you know, are the county. And it's a very standard economic development, you know, product. There's not a lot of deviation in those terms, but we can send those to.
Yeah, I, I just see in one of the images that was sent along at the end of the week, there are three other loans that are listed. So just if we could have it in email, having all of that in one place, it would be helpful.
Maybe I'm reading into your question too much, but just to be clear, I've never been part of a public-private new market tax credit, historic tax credit project, where the city's terms, where the sand was like the first lender on a project. They're always looking for the city to come in and take sort of a lower interest rate a longer term because they stand to benefit the most. So I could tell you right here tonight, PNC's interest rate is higher than the city of Cleveland Heights' interest rate.
Under- understandable, so if you could provide that, that would be really helpful, thank you.
Any other information that we'd like to?
I think we'll also provide in the other projects that we've done, like the most recent loan that we had with the city of Cleveland.
They're a lot larger than us, I understand.
Yes, but the, the R O I was much lower on a per-dollar basis. So we had a three million dollar loan for thirty-seven units on a forty-year term at a one percent interest. So those are the kind of general terms that a city, when they're providing that last money in, leverage seventy million dollars into your city kind of payoff. Those are the terms that we usually settle on. That's what our most recent project in twenty twenty-three that we closed, that was the term.
I, I, I don't know where we are, I don't know where we are right now, but I will say what would be helpful for us is to know this I R R is not good enough to justify this support, what is the I R R you are looking for?
If you could just pull together some of that info and pass it along.
I guess, I guess I would just ask the same. I, I don't know what city council wants. I don't, I don't understand what the principles are that are important to them, can I just give one example?
Yeah, please.
I just give one example, I understand that city council is not, does not negotiate, I appreciate that. When I've worked in other communities, I talked to the city councillor, and they say the following things are important to me. It needs to be prevailing wage, there needs to be union labor on the job, and we want it to be lead-certified. And, and then it goes to economic development, and we understand the principles that city council is working with, and that may include an I R R. Here, I haven't really begun to understand what is important to the Cleveland Heights City Council, and understanding that will allow us to be way more sensitive in any negotiation to making sure that we deliver what it is you want.
So that's, that's completely reasonable. We got this over the weekend, and it, and it changed, you know, I mean, not changed, but it evolved with new information. Saturday, Sunday, and even today, we got some revisions. We got, we received revisions from Jason and, and otherwise, so, so we're, we're, we're just taking it in for the first time finally, you know, with, I mean, I know you sent yours Thursday.
I hear that, but we've also been talking about this on and off with council for four years, we've been working on this project.
I'm not, I'm just saying that, you know, when council gets the actual legislation for the first time, it's the first time. I mean, it's, you know, and, you know, there's, I can tell you there are questions that people have. Some of them are with like our finance department, and some of them are about the.
I, I appreciate that, but I have a very large capital stack of private philanthropists and funders and bankers and tax credit allocates, all looking to place that money in other projects. And I'm saying, just hold on for the city of Cleveland Heights. So we initially thought that this was gonna come before you on August fourth. It's August eighteenth, what is the timeline that city council wants to commit to, to at least vote yes or no on this?
I mean, I, I certainly would like to put it on as fast of a track as we can with the information, you know, seeking the information that we need. Is there anybody else that wants to ask questions? Cause I don't wanna.
I, I feel like we have to make a comment, yes, you have presented, well, first of all, I wanna take a big step backwards. Thank you for bringing our project like this to Cleveland Heights, I do wanna support this project, I think it's a great project. You guys have worked really hard, not only with city of Cleveland Heights, but with other municipalities and agencies in order, in private philanthropy, in order to get the funding to build a capital stack. I just saw the capital stack for the first time and really meaningful R O I information in my first email to Eric Zamp that you were kind enough to, to reply to, and that was what, maybe two weeks ago?
Yeah, that's been out there for a long time.
Well, just so you know, council didn't have that data.
So how do we, how do we move this?
I heard through a newspaper article that it was available and I asked for it. So just so you know where some of our frustration here is, this is sort of like the center of it, okay?
So how do we let our project and the money that we want to invest in Cleveland Heights not be the collateral damage of that process? Like, I appreciate, like, this is, we live in interesting times, but that shouldn't affect someone who wants to come into your city and invest in it.
No question about that, but here we are, as President Kuda has said, we do wanna fast-track and we wanna figure it out. But we also need to feel like that the things, as you mentioned, prevailing wage, council people have this issue and they have this issue. We've shared that with the administration, and I'm afraid that you guys don't have that data. If this, I mean, if you just sort of look at the model, we're just getting some of this stuff two weeks ago, so.
I don't know how we can possibly improve on this project.
This, this is what I would suggest, and if we can fast-track it, we do have a council committee where we can talk about this publicly, and you can hear some of the issues that, that, that council has.
What are we hoping to do today?
So yeah, so maybe, maybe it would be helpful for people to have a better understanding of, uh, two weeks. So you, you got this two weeks ago, you personally got this two weeks ago.
We all got it two weeks ago.
Okay, um, in terms of discussing capital stack and, I mean, the project has evolved a bit. I know that some of the numbers of units have, have shifted a little bit, increased, which I think is an improvement on the project. But this, like, this information has been discussed before that two weeks, but if you got that two weeks ago, is there a timeframe for when you would, so two weeks is not enough time to review it, how much is enough time?
I'm not saying two weeks isn't enough time to review it, okay?
Well, I'm, I'm just asking.
I'm telling you, a deal is being put in front of us that has already been worked out, that hasn't taken any consideration of the items that council has already presented to the administration.
Which items?
Some of this is executive session, and I don't feel comfortable bringing them up right now.
Okay, well, I don't, I don't want anybody to reveal executive session, you did not have to say that anything was executive session. You could have just talked about it publicly if you wanted to. But I will say this, I think that, you know, the, the goal, I hope, that we share is to redevelop this community. We are attempting to put a deal before the council for your consideration. I know that council, you know, each individual council member has an understanding of council's role in that deal process, and, you know, whether it's, you know, three-foot level, thirty-foot level, three-hundred-foot level, three-thousand-foot level review of these things is up to each individual council member, and your vote is yours. But I, 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 I hope that when we're asking for, so you're looking at a particular breakdown that you got two weeks ago. I don't know what the appropriate timeframe is for some of this information and how long council members would like for a process to take before we get to an endpoint. And that's something that I think not just the administration, but also developers generally might want to know what that target might be from council.
You, you, you're implying is if we wanna sit on this and wait as long as possible to comprehend it, that's not, that's not what's going on here.
I just want to know what council needs.
I would need the opportunity to have a conversation and ask more questions with, with, with the developers or my council peers that can ask them in, in a council committee member, uh, council committee. That's, that's the first thing, and then the other thing is, you know, how can we afford this, this is a big ask. We, from what I just understood earlier on this evening, that we just got some financial statements?
It was after I left my house, but you know.
Okay, yeah, so I haven't even opened my email to even see if, if there is, and certainly haven't had a chance even to review them. We have a finance committee meeting tomorrow, I would like to discuss this in our finance committee meeting tomorrow briefly, just to find out where the money's coming from, how much it's gonna cost, cause this, this is something that is unbudgeted. I wanna know if we could afford it.
I mean, I think, I think that's.
Trust to answer that question.
You're saying Director Hurston, right?
I think Director Harrison is really the only person we have who can really give us that information. He's the bonded fiscal agent for the city.
Okay, so I, I do want to, when you say afford it, I'm assuming you don't mean that we have the money available to spend, but you're thinking about downstream potential impacts of not having that money accessible for other uses, opportunity cost stuff?
I don't even know where to begin to sort of unpack that, we haven't had financial statements in a while. We need to see where we are financially before we make an investment of this size.
Okay, well, just so everybody knows, everybody at home and everybody in the room, the, the finance director is obligated to sign off on these sorts of things, including the contract that would be signed in order to ensure that the money is actually available. And when you do invest in anything, you are taking money away from the other possible use of that money after we have the encumbrance process for. And, and so really with any expenditure that we, that we do, it would be signed off on by the finance director as an expenditure that we can afford to make in terms of the money that we have available to us to make it. And with any expenditure, it will also have an opportunity. And with any expenditure, it will also have an opportunity cost in that, you know, scarce resources. We can't spend that same dollar on anything else. So that will be an evergreen issue for us. Um, and and so I guess I will try to see if uh the finance director can uh address your concerns on that issue.
So we, obviously, we have a couple, a few choices here. We we could put it on for first reading. We could air air out some of the questions in the finance committee that that are not answered right now. Uh, before we do that and and put it on uh, you know, on the twenty fifth, cause we are meeting on the twenty fifth. Can I get a consensus from council as to that or some other option? Yeah, please.
I just want you to know that all of council here supports the project. Part of the problem is, and I believe that it will be worked out maybe sometime tomorrow under the finance committee, where the council could actually look at the finances to see where they think the finances should be coming from. Uh, I believe that some of us are hesitant, even myself, not about the project. It's about the long term of two million dollars and we know we have a sewer uh debt of about four, what we say, four hundred million.
It's 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 more than that.
Oh yeah, well, well, okay, but we have a financial, we have a a debt of maybe five hundred fifty million. We have a huge debt with uh our sewers. We have some things that's coming up. Uh, I'm a kind of a leery because I believe with the state of the situation that soon we're gonna have cuts with federal and state funding. And so we would need to figure out how to be able to manage the city as well. We want to help with this project. We just need tomorrow for the finance uh chair and the director and the council to come together, figure out where this is coming from. Is it doable to look at all of the finances? And I think that's, I hope that clears up for you what they, what council is basically looking at. And I think by the twenty fifth, there will be something for you to be.
Can I just give you a a little bit of history? So I think about eighteen months ago, we talked about a two million dollar grant.
Mm-hmm.
And over the course of working with the Economic Development Office, it became a mixture of a loan and a grant because they thought that was much more reasonable. And now it is, the majority is a loan, the minority is a grant. But that, that was an eighteen month old request that's evolved to the benefit of the city, so that's great. But it could have been budgeted for previously. You you just chose not to. But it, I mean, it either it didn't come up or it wasn't, you know, for whatever reason. But it's like, I don't wanna give the impression that we are coming and like trying to jam, you know, council on the last couple of weeks. But we've been talking about this as a specific request for eighteen months. We've also been told the city of Cleveland Heights is always the last money in. We we never come in early. And so we are now at the very end of this process. All of our partners want to close. They have end of the year deadlines. It takes four months to put those closings into into work. So we have to start now. And so for a part, for a partner to say, we support it. We wanna be the last dollars in and then to not actually be there is a very difficult position to put this project in.
Can I, can I just add for a moment? I would, I would just say like, I I certainly don't envy all of the financial decisions, difficulties that you face. But I would argue one of the way out of these goes is to grow. And then I, as opposed to saying, how can we afford to do this? I would flip it around and say, how can you afford not to grow? You have twenty seven acres there. If this project goes away, the ten million dollar tax credit goes away, the eighteen million dollar new market tax credit goes away, and what comes next? The likelihood that the invisible hand is gonna work, this project's gonna be developed, and no one's gonna ask the city for anything. I think that's really far fetched. I think this is probably one of the better deals for twenty seven acres in your city with all the potential that you're gonna look at if this goes away. So I I just, I just wanna offer that.
So we we definitely, I mean, I think it's.
Can I just give one other thing?
Yeah, right.
Which is the same funding mechanisms that we're talking about, the same way in which the city is gonna need to participate. As you move severance from a plan, which all it, all it is is a plan into reality, it's gonna be the same tools, the same sort of asks. So the idea that like, you know, it just feels to me like Cleveland Heights is really good at planning, it's really good at surveying. But now we're getting to the execution moment and it feels like no one really knows how to move it forward. And and you're not leaving us with a timeline. I literally, our new market tax credit provider is telling us, hey, if there's a gap in this project and it's not moving forward, we need to go put this in another municipality. I've said this now to Councilman Kuda, I've said this to the mayor, I've said this to everyone for a period of time. And Cleveland Heights, it's kind of big, it's like it's on its own timeline and all the rest of the funding will still be there. So.
It's just not true.
It's just not true. So you can take as long as you need, but don't be surprised if you hear from us that all of this funding went away.
Well, I think, I think what we should do right now is commit to, I mean, we now, we did get the legislation Friday night, like late Friday night. That's, I'm I'm not, I'm not putting this on you. I'm not putting on, I'm just telling you.
Yeah, I know.
And I, I I would be fine with committing to putting it on for eight twenty five. I just don't know that we could, we could do this right in this moment. Unless somebody wants to do that, yes. Because I don't want you to walk out of here going, it's, it's, it's. It could be never.
In the absence of revealing any conversation that shouldn't be revealed, I would be very careful not to do that. Um, but the administration does seek insight from the council. Um, that insight is generally not publicly provided. Those conversations in executive session are not subject to the scrutiny of the public. Um, they are private conversations and so we can't talk about what council does or does not know, was or was not told, did or did not say in those executive session conversations, right?
Mm-hmm.
But the administration attempts to seek insight from council and council members about their attitudes toward development, a particular development, particular deals. And when we receive that insight, when we get that insight through one mechanism or another, we have an opportunity and we generally attempt to have further conversation with developers in order to conform to reality. Because we don't want the deal to die, but we also recognize that as we're negotiating, we've got sort of a rock and a hard place. The deal can die here on council side, or the deal can die here on the developer side. And we have to find some middle ground. That's what this negotiation is about.
I think we're doing that.
And we can't predict the future, we can only make projections.
Yeah.
Um, and so in the effort of doing that, we receive, and and again, you know, all of you got this email last week, um sort of a, a new compromise that is based in sort of a holistic set of insights that we have received and attempted to incorporate into our negotiation with these developers. And that new compromise is, I would think, I would suppose, an improvement from a particular perspective at the city um in the hopes of getting this deal done moving forward so that something can be built, uh as opposed to just talked about. And so that's why the legislation needed to be revised. That's why the deal needed to be revised, because in the attempt to get more insight from council, we were able to find a new, more beneficial compromise with the developer, more beneficial to the city, uh with the developer. And given the amount of time that we have been talking about the project as a whole and steadily moving this ask from a two million dollar grant to what we are now discussing, which is a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant.
This moment, you don't have time to recapitulate, but I I do.
Not attempting to recapitulate. What I'm, what I'm, what I'm bringing into question here is the assertion that there is something wrong with us attempting to move with alacrity once we come to a new compromise and submitting it to council as quickly as we possibly can. Now, I admit, council, hearing this and seeing these terms, the in the broad strokes of the terms, you know, it's a reduction in the grant, it's a uh an increase in the loan, it's a reduction in the term, it's an increase in the the interest rate, right? These are all directions that generally one would assume the council would be appreciative of. Um, and in this case, hopefully, council doesn't think that it's a, a, you know, not an improvement on on what we've discussed previously. But I I just, I I have some concerns about the the characterization of this that somehow the administration, upon presenting it to council as soon as we have a new compromise, is problematic. Now, obviously, council can take its time.
No problem.
Right?
No problem there.
I appreciate that. I appreciate, cause I'm not sh- I'm not sure everybody feels the same way. I just want all of you to know that we're not trying to rush this four year conversation.
Right.
But we are trying to get to the finish line.
We're, we're, we're all, we're all, I think, there, I think some new things have come up in the last few days. We have obviously had some questions and concerns. I think there's no question that we're going to put this on the fastest track possible. And I don't mean that as a euphemism or anything like that or a slogan. I think we'll be able to do something in the next week. I really do. Go ahead.
Discussing this in finance committee tomorrow night, um, because the terms were discussed in executive session. Do we just ask Director Hairston if we can afford the total amount?
I think we can. I think if need be, like, the, pardon?
You can ask him that.
The terms are on publicly.
Yeah.
The, they're publicly available now at this point.
Yes.
The terms themselves. The terms are public record, correct.
Yeah.
The conversation in executive session is privileged by executive session privilege practices.
The terms, these new documents that we got in our emails, they're posted.
Documents are not executive session protected.
Yes. They're posted on the website? Okay. So we can talk about the terms tomorrow night.
Yeah, they, I mean, they're, they and their council were on the email exchanges, so they are they're not privileged, they're public record. And so, yeah, they're, they're outside of, go ahead.
And and I don't know how you would talk about it meaningfully if you couldn't talk about the terms of the deal that you're discussing. So, yeah, it's fine.
So, Mayor Sarah, tomorrow night at six o'clock, we have our meeting, finance committee meeting. And I will be asking Director Hairston if we, where the funding would source would be, that we would use for this project. So that's where the affordability question gets answered tomorrow night, and I will relay that back to President Kuda after we've had that discussion.
Well, I I do want to just clarify for you that the finance director can provide you with information about whether or not we have money that we can spend on this.
Yes.
But in terms of priority setting, again, I go back to the opportunity cost here and scarce resources. If you spend this money on this use, you will not be able to spend it on something else.
Right.
And so if council determines that there's something else that it wants to spend this money on, well, that's a policy question for council to determine.
Yeah, and just so you know, we're, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna do the, our due diligence here and get this moving. All right, uh second readings, we have uh one fifty two. That's an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute subordination agreement with People's Bank Corp. And subordinate the city's mortgage, that's the Russo loan. So that's second reading. And then third reading, we have, uh, is that this?
No.
Okay, no, that's another third reading, okay.
President.
One, yes.
Oh, it was, go ahead, continue, I'm sorry.
Yeah, one twenty seven, uh, this is an ordinance creating a new chapter thirteen seventy three exterior walls. And I, you know, pertinences, I'm sorry.
Pertinences.
So we we know what that is. And we have this third reading, yeah.
Sorry, on that piece of legislation, the facade ordinance, I'd like to, before voting, I'd like to receive the feedback that we received from the stakeholders who we reached out to. So I know that that was something that I previously asked for.
You have something there? Oh, you didn't get it.
Right, yeah. So if if we could receive that, I think that would be, that would be helpful.
So who would we get that from?
That's a question for the administration. I was told that rec- that feedback was sought and received and.
I don't, I don't know what that entire process looked like, but.
It was a email, uh, good evening, everybody. It was a email from uh one of the architects, one of the engineers, which I believe.
Can't hear you.
Yeah, I, I can't hear, sir.
You think it, you think that you see that?
I have not received a recent email with feedback. I, I was, I think we were told that there was some information that was sought and provided.
That was a email received from the, one of the engineers, which I believe the director was uh, uh, working on it. And I need to send that to the people.
So that was the only feedback. I I thought that that was unsolicited, that.
That was the only feedback we had.
Okay, so what Mr. Lewin sent, that was.
Correct, that was the one that was absolutely.
But but there, if I might, Mr. President, there are, there are some changes that are reflected in the clean copy of uh Exhibit Eight to Ordinance One Twenty Seven, Twenty Twenty Five. And and essentially, they come down to uh changing the reinspection period to five years. So it's not quite as frequent and changing the compliance, uh, the time to gain compliance to one full year. Um, unless somebody's had a com- um qualifying inspection within a year prior to the effective date, in which case they're supposed to use that within six months.
This would be something that council would need to, to.
Amend by substitution. And so you'll see that the uh ordinance is labeled amended eight fourteen.
Yes.
Twenty twenty five. So that's the one you wanna refer to when making that motion to them.
And then we have a, on third reading, Vice President Russell's uh legislation ninety seven, twenty twenty five, a resolution expressing support for Prentice Place Transitional Living Facility for homeless women and with children project. Okay, and then lastly, we have the consent agenda, one sixty two, one sixty three, and one sixty four. One sixty two is Suicide Prevention Month, then uh one sixty three, National Lead Poisoning Prevention, and one sixty four, National Service Talk Club. So unless there are any questions about that, I'm gonna adjourn this meeting.
With ninety seven, so we are talking about a reporting requirement. So I don't see anything specifically in here about that.
Thank you for that.
There'll be, and so that's going to be by agreement, by grant agreement now, just because of so the layout we got from the narrative that was provided Thursday or Friday of last week, uh, had some raised some questions as to who the entity we were contracting with was and how it was going to work with the fiscal agent that they have. And so it's gonna be easier just to do it by a standard grant agreement and the reporting requirements will be in the grant agreement.
Or a six month report back, six month report back will be added, so.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, it's, yeah, there'll be like.
A se- a freestanding agreement.
Yeah.
For the, for the grant.
Thank you.
That's in the new section two, which was broken out of the prior section.
Okay, thank you.
All right, let's get ready to apologize. This meeting is adjourned at eight twenty six.